Alright. Alright, good evening, everyone. We have a little hybrid model going on here tonight. We have virtual audience as well as in-person audience, which is great to see having some people here without masks on. And for the last couple of months, we've been meeting with Bogota Police Department and our administration team and talking about some things that we've been seeing going on in our schools, also things going on in the community that is coming into our schools the next day. So what we wanted to do was introduce you to some of the trends we're seeing, some things that you might be aware of, unaware of what rights are students, what you know, what happens off campus and comes to school. A lot of times I get phone calls, something happened off campus. What can I do about it? We want make sure that you have a full understanding of how that goes. So obviously, we're about two years into COVID. This year, when we had students come back into the building, it was a big adjustment for many students. And when we got back into the building, we saw a lot of trends going on. We started the school year with the TikTok challenge. This is where each month, students were given a challenge, and it was usually something that was to destroy school property, property in the community, hit students. We had a national gun violence shooting School Violence Day, which I've never had in my 22 years in education. Social media has taken over our students' lives. We've had fighting in the building, off-campus, reports of bullying, and the biggest thing that we're dealing with day in and day out right now is vaping. Fifteen years ago, when I was a vice principal, if you caught a kid smoking cigarettes, it was a big thing. You could smell it, you can see it. These new vape cartridges and vape pens that the students have, you cannot even detect the odor nine times out of 10. So they are able to use it in a bathroom, they're able to use it in a locker. They're able to walk in through the hallway, and if they're slick enough, take a pull from a vapor pen and not get caught. So, you know, we're trying to really make sure that we are coming down on that. And when I say coming down on that, we want to make sure that the parents and the students are aware of what they are doing to themselves. They are harming themselves. We are nowhere near knowing what is in some of these things, especially my biggest concern if students are buying things online, that you have no idea what is in it. And the harm that they can be doing themselves down the road can be very serious. So we want to make sure we're keeping our parents informed when we catch students. We want to make sure our students are aware of the damage they're doing, and they're young, they don't think of, they're not thinking 10 years from now, they're not thinking 10 days from now, most of them. But we got to make sure that we're educating them on that. So one thing that we've been dealing with is bullying. I think a lot of times, the word is thrown out there, and I want to go over what the definition is, what the letter of the law is. I'm not saying, if there's an incident, a parent or a student might say, this child is bullying me, or bullying my child. And that might just be a conflict between two students. I'm not saying it's not happening, but anytime we hear the word bullying, we're going to investigate bullying. But in New Jersey, it is defined as any gesture, whether written, verbal, physical, or through electric communication, electronic communication. It could be a single incident or a series of incidents. And it has to be motivated by an actual or perceived characteristic such as race, color, religion, national origin, gender, sexual orientation, gender identity, and expression, a mental or physical or disability, or any other distinguishing characteristic. Alright, so if there is, a student is making some fun of someone for the way they look, what religion they are, that is 100% bullying. If they're getting into an argument, and I'm going to say this, we had two students fight over dinosaurs last week. That is not a bullying case. That is a conflict, and it will be dealt with because there is no fighting in school, and there are consequences, but that is not a bullying, as we say. So bullying, though, is the one thing that the school's reach does go past the school building. If the kids are getting bullied outside of school, it is our right and it's our duty to do something. That is non-negotiable. So we have a problem with a student, and there's bullying, and it's off-campus, it's electronic. We will deal with that. That is 100% in our range, and we will do that. So here's what we're seeing. So what are signs that my child is being bullied? I have three children of my own, ages 16, 14, and 13 right now, so that is sophomore year, eighth grade and seventh grade. I could tell you, I was with them through the pandemic, and I see one had no effect, my middle child that had a big effect on. You know, the important thing to me is having open communication with your children, having a conversation. But, you know, if you see signs that there's physical injuries, they come home. One day, the kid fell because he was playing basketball, but then two weeks later, he comes home with something else not looking right. Lost or damaged belongings, whether torn clothes, missing books, book bags, fearful of attending school, complaints of headaches and stomachaches, changing in eating habits, sudden loss of friends, or avoidance of social situation, declining grades, decreased self-esteem, trouble sleeping or nightmares, or engaging in self-destructive behavior, whether it's harming themselves or threatening to. Now, we are putting this on top of all the pressure and stress that they've been dealing with from a social and emotional learning during the pandemic. Right? So there's a lot going on. When we were kids, right, if I fell in the cafeteria, the people that were sitting at the table saw me fall in the cafeteria, that's only person that saw it. Maybe he saw it and told his friend, and maybe they laughed about it. Nine times out of 10, there's going to be a video of that kid falling, and now everybody knows that kid fell. Alright, that is their kid's first reaction is to post something on social media. That is something that we have to curb, right? And that is because what we're seeing as we get older now, students' social media accounts are coming into getting into colleges and jobs. They're going back and finding things that they posted when they were 14 and 15 years old, and students have lost good internships and colleges have lost jobs. So it's important that we are talking to our students about this, and we are reinforcing this in school and home. So what can I do as a parent? We always, the first thing that we always want to say is talk to your child, right? Now, I get it 100%. Again, I have three kids. I'm here a lot. My wife is with the kids a lot, but my three kids are going three different ways. We don't get a chance to sit down and eat dinner when we would like to, like in the, you know, everyone's like, oh, sit down, have dinner. It's impossible. I got a daughter going Irish dance, I got a son going to basketball, I got a son going to swimming, I got a board meeting. That's not going to happen, right? But when I pick them up, I try to have a conversation when I'm talking about that. Who are their friends with? I always ask my daughter, who'd you sit with at lunch today? Who are you talking to? Do you ever feel left out? Does anyone ever tease you? And these could be little things that they might not even pick up on, but maybe one day, they might bring it up. Remind your child that if they witness bullying, they should let a staff member know. Monitor your child's online activity. I have a sophomore in high school, I go through his phone, I pay for his phone, I will go through his phone. It is simple as that. If he has a job and wants to pay for it, go ahead, be my friend, I will not go through your phone, but as long as I pay for it, that is my phone. Right? Talk to your school principal or counselor. So I have to say this, and you know, the number one thing I hear is, I don't want my kid snitching. I don't want me to snitch on a kid. And this is a parent saying this to me. So they're witnessing bad behavior. Their child is witnessing bad behavior, but they don't want to tell us. If I cannot have the information, I cannot help. Our counselors cannot help. Our building principals cannot help. We have a speak-up, right? I'm putting this up there, I've sent it out a couple of times this year. But this is an anonymous tip line that goes to the school that you can send a tip into us, whether it's a text, it's a phone call, or an email. Alright, it gets sent to a company that checks it for us and then forwards it to us right away. If it's something silly like, oh, I tripped on a garbage can today, and trust me, I see some funny things in there, I'm not going to even tell you what they put sometimes. But I have a camera pretty much in every building and every area of common areas and hallways. We don't have them in lock rooms, we don't have them in bathrooms. But if something's happening in a hallway, and your kid comes home and tells you, this kid pushed me in the hallway from behind and laughed at me in my face. You just got to tell us the day, we're going to find what time it was, we're going to find it. That is not a call when we call students in that mommy called and told us. That is, a teacher saw you, I went back with on the camera, it looked like you pushed someone, who'd you push? Alright, this is what happens a lot of time. A teacher might see it, and they will send it down to us. But it's important that you, if you see something, please tell us. What I get as the vice principal of the high school all the time was, my son was getting picked on, I never said anything because I thought we can deal with it, but now he got mad and punched him in the face. But he's been getting picked on for two months. I understand, but I can't justify it. Because if you got picked on once, and you told us, and we dealt with it, maybe your child does not put hands on him. I understand why you did, but again, we're always going to ask you to let us know. We really have a lot of things going on here in the district, and I think the last two years with COVID, a lot of things really weren't out there. But we have internships, we have kids going out doing different programs, we have tons of clubs and sports. We just opened up our middle school sports up to sixth grade now, so that was good for them. We have dual enrollment courses. So right now, whether you are a top 10 student in the class, or you the bottom 10 of the student, you have an opportunity to take college courses here for a very cheap price. You do not have to be the best student, but you have to have all your credits ready to go. We have an early childhood program that students are identified that are doing extremely well, and they want to continue to work, and they work in high school, and by the time they graduate, they graduate with an associate degree from Bergen Community College. That is something that is pretty cool. So we had, I think, seven or eight students last year, seniors in Bogota, right, who graduated from high school and then also received a diploma from Bergen Community College at the same time, because they put the work in. Right? You're going to have opportunities for trade school. I don't care what anyone says, my students that work hard here, right, go to college where they want to go. Each year, we're over $2 or $3 million in scholarships. Alright, so it's here if you want it, right? Our students, we're preaching to them constantly. This is not easy. Right? If you want to be successful, you have to put the work in, you have to put the time in. It's easy not to study on a Thursday night because you're tired. And then you say the next day, well, I didn't do good on the test. I could tell you why you didn't, because you didn't put the effort in. This is effort, and we are trying to constantly teach that to our students. What you put into it is what you are getting out of it, and we all know, everyone's sitting here, they are not giving it out for free on the corner. That is not happening, so you have to go get it. Alright, the one thing I will constantly say to our parents is that we are here for you, right? Please contact us. Please contact us. I think anyone that's contacted me will tell you that I get back to them within 24 hours. If I don't have the answer, I'm going to get you the answer. Alright, this is a partnership. We have your children 182 of the days. We also have them about six to eight hours a day, and that's not a cloud, including kids that are in clubs and sports and drama in the band. So it's important that we're in communication. We need to know to help, alright? I will always stress that. A parent will say to me, I'm going to tell you something, but I don't want you to do anything about it, my kid's getting picked on. I'm like, you're telling the wrong person this, because you're telling me not to do something, but in a month, you're going to say, I told you. So I'm always going to say, I have to do something about it. Please don't start a conversation, please don't tell anyone this, but and again, I always like to say this too, nothing is too small, right? Small problems become big problems. Alright, for us, it's very important that you're in communication. Email is a great thing now. We're busy, I get it. It takes three minutes to send an email and say, hey, would like to take a five-minute phone call, I'm free from 10:30, can you please reach out to me at that time? 100%, someone's going to make a phone call. How it works is this, you contact your building principal. If you are not happy with the response your building principal got to you, please respond to me. If you are not happy with my response, please come to a board meeting and make that known that I went to the building principal, I'm not happy, I went to the superintendent, I'm not happy, so this is my last recourse. We have nice checks and balances on this. So again, but we have to know to help. And that concludes my part of this. We're going to have the Bogota Police Department go through some slides and talk about some of what they're witnessing from a police department standpoint, and then at the end, we'll have some questions and answers for anyone that would like comments, anything at all, we will take at that time.
Thank you Superintendent Kennedy. I'm Chief May, I'm here with my officers. We're here to speak about behavior that we have been seeing on the internet that was brought to my attention by Detective Lariano and Sergeant Cole, in which we're starting to see juveniles getting into fights off the school grounds, filming it, and then putting it on video. This presentation that we wanted to put together started, I guess, about two weeks ago. I asked Superintendent Kennedy to come down to our headquarters where we spoke about the incidences that we're seeing. And what's impressing me, which I don't see in a lot of other towns, this is a unified approach between the school and the police department. And as you can tell, we have members from the board here from the school, we have the police commissioner here. So this is something that I think altogether, we're trying to approach, put a stop to it, because right now, we've had nobody hurt, we've had nobody killed, but it could lead to that, and that's not what we're about here. It's not what we're about. So like Mr. Kennedy said, he has some young children, I have an 11 and a 13-year-old. And the other day, I'm driving my daughter to a basketball game. She has her phone in her hand, and she starts telling me about a girl in school that on their phone, there's messages being put out, how they're picking on her. So I asked her, who are the kids who are putting it out? Well, they have apps now where you can actually say stuff about the people, and it doesn't tell you who they are. And to me, that scared me, because you can take one child in school, and everybody pick up and start teasing her, and where are we reading where these kids are killing themselves? So this was one of my major concerns, that this is going on. So when we're seeing these fights going on, you're seeing comments being made. It's, the social media is scaring me, because it's just, it's very difficult to us approach. I don't, like I said, I have a 13-year-old who, they don't talk, it's everything's through the phone, you know, and that's where this bullying is occurring. You know, back in the day, when there was a fight, you know, everybody gathered around and then pulled everybody off. Well, that's not what they do nowadays. They take their phones out and they film it, and then they post it. And to me, that just leads to more and more and more, because the attention is out there, you see all the views from the kids watching it. And sometimes I think our morals are getting a little slanted, where we're cheering this on instead of addressing it and stopping it. So we wanted to get a hold of this before it actually got out of hand. So again, I asked Mr. Kennedy to come down, and I want to see that during the year, when we see these incidents happen, not just the fights on the outside, but maybe the bullying and the vaping, that we all work together and as a community address it. Because I think that's the only way we will be able to resolve it. I want to thank my officers who are here tonight. Detective Lariano is here on his own time. He was in work at 8 o'clock, and he's still here because he felt it was that important. So I'm going to turn the mic over to Sergeant Cole, who today put the presentation together, and Sergeant Cole.
Thank you, Chief Superintendent Kennedy. Thank you also for having us here. So obviously, the purpose of us being here is we want to inform the parents and our guardians of some of the trends that we've been seeing lately. Some of the things that we have noticed, and social media posts that we've seen personally, and that we've heard about, and complaints that have been brought to our department. And we also want to educate some parents and let them know what sites are out there, what to look for, what they need to see on what's going on, and some of the laws that could potentially be broken, or that their son or daughter might be involved in in order to get in trouble for. Another thing, we were here to prevent any other things that are happening. We're here to prevent people fighting, we're here to prevent people smoking, vaping in school, bullying other people. We're trying to nip this in the bud before we have any large-scale problems. Because we haven't had school in two years, it's, you know, everybody's hiding behind a keyboard, and they like to say what they want. But when you come face-to-face with people, then it becomes more of a confrontational type issues. We also want to have open communication between law enforcement, parents, and the schools. We don't want people to be scared to come to the police department to report something. We don't want juveniles to be scared of us to come say, hey, I'm being picked on, or somebody's picking on another student. We want to make sure that everybody feels open and safe coming to us and expressing something that they see is wrong in the community. And most importantly, we want to provide safe on-campus and off-campus environments for all the students, teachers, staff, and law enforcement, so we don't have any serious issues that will arise. Next slide. So real quick, on-campus definition, sometimes there's a thin line between what happens on school, what's on school property, what's not on school property. So the basic version of that is, it's going to be any and all parts of the schools owned and/or leased by the Borough of Bogota Board of Education. That's high school fields, it's on the sidewalks outside the high school or any other elementary schools. Backyards of the high school and the side yards and playgrounds of the schools is considered an on-campus thing. Off-campus is any and all public or private property, which includes sidewalks, roadways, driveways, lawns, inside homes, businesses, etc., and their parking lots. So when people are going over to 7-Eleven and creating disturbances, that's obviously considered an off-campus definite definition there. Here we go into the next slide for unacceptable behavior on campus, where we're going to have involvement include physical assaults of others, taking, stealing, theft of property belonging to any school that's owned by the school, any students, teachers, things like that. Any harassment, intimidation, and bullying of other people is also going to have our involvement inside the school. Damaging school property, graffiti, hate speech, and bias intimidation, which means we're not going to stand for somebody talking bad about somebody's race, gender, sexual orientation, nationality. That's, that's a high offense in the state of New Jersey, and Bergen County also takes it very seriously. So we're not going to deal with that. If anybody gets involved with that, they're most likely going to be taken care of to the fullest extent of the law. Smoking and vaping on school property in schools, whether it's after-school, on school property, it's still considered a violation. And possession and use of illegal drugs. Now, these, these things that I brought up is also in the student code of conduct that the school provides every student, and along with having it being a school or a state administrative law for juveniles on school property. As Superintendent Kennedy gave you the extended version of bullying being defined, we shortened it down a little bit. It's basically the intentional and repeated aggressive behavior by a person or persons to coerce, assault, harass, or threaten other people, etc. It also includes psychological and cyberbullying. The psychological part of it is is making fun of people and putting stuff into people's heads, saying that they should do something or something else is going to happen. Basically blackmailing and coercing them. Types of this bullying is texting, people texting back and forth, making fun of people through texts or through apps that there is. We're going to go through a couple of apps later on to explain what's out there. Social media posts, like I said, blackmailing other people, and threatening to physically harm or assault other people is is another type of bullying that's also not acceptable. Along with these bullying statutes that's here, we a lot of the stuff that we deal with also falls under harassment. Now, in New Jersey, harassment is considered communications, including anonymous communications, as Chief May was saying, there's apps out there that make things anonymous that cause alarm or annoyance to another person, and social media posts. Types of harassment is repeated alarming acts to threaten others, making comments about others, making comments on social media, texting others about other people, causing annoyance or alarm. If they're, if they're making people scared, basically, that can be considered harassment, and that's a criminal violation within the state of New Jersey. As we all know, assaults, assaults aren't going to be taken lightly, whether it's in school or out of school. Assaults are defined as a physical attack on another person by the use of hands, feet, weapons, and they attempt to cause bodily injury to another person. Somebody pushing somebody down, and they hit their head, or they get hurt in any way, that's considered an assault. Something as, as I hate to say, as small as that is considered an assault. Now we move on more to our side of it for the off-campus or off-school property behavior, which we're definitely, you're definitely going to have police involvement with, and that's going to be assault, harassment, and bullying, including cyberbullying. Criminal mischief, which is breaking things. Use it doing, taking items and throwing them through windows, writing stuff on walls or public areas, that's considered a criminal mischief. Obviously, the possession of illegal substances such as drugs, narcotics, and theft and shoplifting. You're definitely going to see us if you have involvement with that. So the consequences of our actions on and off-school property, if it's on-school property, depending on the severity of what happened, the school administration is going to make the discretion on what they want to do. We leave that up to them. If they feel that it's just an isolated incident, and it's something that is not blown out of proportion, they usually, we let them handle that along with us by their side, making sure that everything's good and everybody's safe. Sometimes we use parental discretion of things that has happened on school property. That could be, if there's an incident- That could be if there's an incident in school and somebody's calling somebody names, it could be considered a harassment on our end. But when the school contacts parents, they talk about it, they realize, okay, there's either a misunderstanding or how are we going to prevent it um on school property? Another aspect of how we're dealing, we deal with it is uh through judicial discretion. So if an incident happens on school property and we have to try to file up, file complaints or work it out so we could try to get to the bottom of what happened, sometimes the courts get involved. So the 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 courts may decide what they want to do and how they wish us to proceed, and that's above our level of uh dealing with things. And then there's the obviously uh the the criminal proceedings of what may happen if uh somebody is actually charged with with some sort of crime. So I'm going to turn it over to Detective Sergeant Lariano. Uh, he's going to go through some of the uh ramifications and the judicial process of uh what could happen if we uh have somebody uh getting into fights or or other things.
Thank you, Sarge, um and thank you all for for attending. Um, so there there's slight, there's a slight misconception on 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 some of the parents and a lot of the students that while I'm under eighteen, I'm not going to get in trouble. The cops can't touch me. The cops can't do anything to me. Unfortunately for them, there are ramifications to a lot of their actions that we just spoke about, right? So there's three levels of actions that we would take, uh one being curbside warnings, the other one being a station house adjustment, and then last but not least, the juvenile complaint. Curbside warning, curbside warning for the official uh definition is a brief informal interaction with the juvenile for very minor delinquency that is personally observed by the officer, right? Small little fight and we witness it, we can speak with the child there and move them along. Um, it can be, it can be used for minor delinquency, again, um a PDP, uh which is a petty disorderly uh persons, a disorderly persons or a fourth degree crime. That's our extent of a criminal of a curbside warning. It can never be used for possession or use of alcohol and or marijuana. Okay, and in in the in in the in in the instance that they are, they do have possession of any of those two, parents shall be notified. So that's that's one of the parts where we have a lot of discretion, right? So uh depend depending who the child is and 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 the types of 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 I don't I don't want to call it a crime or he's just being a knucklehead out there and and we can speak to him. Um, if it has to move forward and speak to the parent and 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 have him knock it off, we can take care of it then, right? Now we go to a station house adjustment, okay? Station house adjustment is a little more, a little bit more in detail and there's a lot of 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 uh moving parts to it. So a station house adjustment is an alternative method that law enforcement agencies may use to handle first time, very important, first time juvenile offenders who have committed minor juvenile delinquency offenses within their jurisdiction. Pretty self explanatory, right? So anything um uh for instance, the assault. Kid gets into a fight, first time offense, uh we can bring him in, speak to his parents and we can work out a station house adjustment, and I'll explain what that does, okay? The intent of the station house adjustment program is to provide for immediate consequences such as community service or restitution and a prompt and convenient resolution for the victim. Okay, criminal mischief, as Sergeant Cole explained, uh kid throws a chair out the window, hits somebody's car, breaks the windshield. Awful. Um, we can go ahead and first time offense, we can go ahead and move to attempt to get restitution for that windshield and 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 give the victim a prompt solution to what happened to his car or her car, right? While at the same time benefiting the juvenile, the juvenile by avoiding the stigma of a formal juvenile delinquency record. Right? So in lieu of charges, instead of charging uh that juvenile uh criminal mischief, uh he would get a station house adjustment if approved by all parties. Okay, which is huge for a first time offender when it comes to something like this. In many instances, the this early intervention will deter the youth from continuing their negative behavior and divert the youth from progressing further into the juvenile system. So if we can scare them right and bring them in and go through this whole process and see what the process is and explain to them that in lieu of them getting criminal charges, which will be on their record forever, regardless if you're a juvenile or not, that stays in your record forever, okay? We might nip it in the butt right there and 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 maybe change his behavior or her behavior uh from doing this in the future. Okay, um so let's say there's um, there was an incident uh where we 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 can consider a station house adjustment. The officer will transport the juvenile to headquarters. The officer will ask the juvenile or call his, you know, will ask the juvenile and his parents, now obviously will call his parents um and the victim to come to police headquarters to discuss the offense. During that conversation, uh all the parties involved need to agree with it. If the victim decides that he doesn't feel that this student or this juvenile should have a station house adjustment, there is no deal. Everybody needs to agree with it, right? Um, and the juvenile himself or herself needs to accept the program. The officer then refers any needed services and if property has been stolen or damaged, we may require the juvenile to make restitution in some form. Like I stated before, um if the juvenile is accepted, a complaint will not be filed against him or her. So there would be no record. Juvenile will have no criminal record as long as he or she satisfactorily completes the program. So this is, this is one avenue um that the county and the state provides the juvenile, um especially, you know, for first time offense offenders um to try to correct their actions. So from here, we move up to the juvenile complaint. Here it gets a little bit more serious. Um, in more serious cases, the officer may conclude that the informal resolution, resolution is unlikely to be effective and that formal charges made are necessary. So in assault, uh fight happens outside in front of seven eleven and one of the students exposes a knife. We just bumped it from a assault to an possible aggravated assault. Uh, weapon charges for unlawful purposes, there's a slew of charges that we can charge that the unfortunately juvenile committed, right? At this point, the station house adjustment would not apply to this, okay? So there would be two charging documents. It would be a complaint warrant or complaint summons. Okay, complaint warrant, it allows the officer to take that child in cust- custody and detain them uh while uh completing the charges. Uh, most likely, uh he would go through a whole uh slew of questions with 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 the county um and and juvenile intake Bergen County Prosecutor's Office and uh they would provide us if um he would be uh remanded to juvenile detention uh or not. We can speak about all that stuff in a a lot further um and in more detail. A complaint summons, a complaint summons is is maybe the the uh the uh it wasn't so serious, um but still needed to be on a complaint. The at at this point, he would, he or she would be issued a summons, which is a a ticket, and he would be allowed to go home with his parents um uh awaiting any court uh appearances. And like I mentioned before, it's it's very important for the juvenile to know um that once a record has been created with a juvenile complaint, it can only be removed by an expungement, okay? It will never be removed. You can go on through your whole entire life and apply for for any any uh any jobs. When when the background check is done and they do a juvenile complaint check, they'll check what it is. You may or may not uh uh, you know, get that employment. You know, with that said, um we'll conclude and and I'll give it back to Sergeant Cole um with any more.
So everybody's seen the uh the definitions of what could happen. What the school is going to do, what we can do. A lot of this came up recently because of the fact we've had thirty, forty children after school going into the seven eleven parking lot around buildings, on people's property, in people's backyards, um fighting, pushing each other down, um calling each other's names, uh bullying each other. Running their pockets for vapes that they have in school. They've been doing a lot of stuff which is considered bullying under our definition for being in public. They've been harassing people. They've been assaulting people. We have gotten down to the bottom of it. We have seen these videos on social media where the people are outside the high school, down the block from this high school, videotaping people, beating somebody up, uh people fighting, throwing them, throwing people into cars, breaking people's car windows because they're fighting. It's not a big, serious problem. These are little isolated incidents. But like we said, we're here to make sure that it doesn't become a huge problem and it doesn't become an issue that we're going to end up in the newspaper for. We don't want to do that. We want to make sure that everybody's safe here. We want to make sure that sure that our, the the school and the staff are all safe and every single person that walks in through this door of this school remains safe. We don't want people fighting in the bathrooms. We understand that that kids are going to fight. But when we take it to the level of videotaping stuff, bullying people, um doing illegal stuff, having vapes or having illegal substances in schools, w- we're not going to accept that and we shouldn't accept that as a community. We shouldn't accept that as a police department or a school. Um, this is where all the parents come in. Our parents need to talk to our children. They need to explain to them what happens if they do something wrong. They need to look through their phones. They need to see what kind of apps they have on their phones. They need to check their social media. Um, listed here, uh Facebook, WhatsApp, Snapchat, Instagram Messenger, um a Facebook Messenger rather, Discord, Twitter, TikTok, Kick Messenger and GroupMe, some of the most popular type uh apps that are out there. As parents, you need to go through your kids' phones and you need to talk to them. The age of, oh, I think they'll be okay, my kid wouldn't do that, is pretty much gone with all this social media stuff. We need to sit down and have good conversations with our children and find out what they're doing. When you ask them about their day and they say, oh, it was fine, ask them, you know, was everybody nice to you? Were you nice to everybody? Was there any fights or anything? Or if you hear some some rumors going around, sit your child down and have a a good decent, open conversation with them. Uh, we need to, we need to make sure that your children, along with the parents, are taking responsibility. You wouldn't understand how many times we come in and said, hey, your child got into a fight. He was bullying somebody uh as it's said in our definition and the parents are like, oh, not my kid, he's perfect at home. Well, we see the actual events that happen. We've seen it on video. We've seen it in person. We don't call parents to the police station or have to deal with the school for a situation for no reason. There's there's one hundred and ten percent reasons why we would be dealing with your child or talking to your child about what they did. So we're also here to make sure that everybody stays safe and that everybody can come to us and make sure that they can explain what their child is going through or a problem that they're having with another child. Um, and we want to make sure that that everybody knows that we're here to help them. We're not here to hurt people. We're not here to make people upset or scared or say that they're snitching on people. We need to just make sure that everybody around here is safe. So with that being said, um, does anybody in the audience here have questions or comments or on online for us that we could uh?
Uh, well, I think what I I want to say too as well is that um, you know, when when we hear we're in contact with the police department, I think a lot of families get scared right away. I think the thing that we have to understand, like this behavior that we're seeing, this is not isolated to Bogota. Uh, this has been going on everywhere. I'm in contact with all the surrounding districts. So this is not like there's something wrong in Bogota. It it's something that we're dealing with with all students and and teenagers uh at this age right now. The one thing that I want to really get across though is that in our constant conversations, you know, I I can call uh the chief, I can call the captain, I can call um, you know, everyone sitting up here and saying, hey, we got to deal with something. We're not here to um hammer kids for making a mistake. You know, fourteen, fifteen year old kids, they don't think sometimes and with these phones to do something, you can do something stupid and intent, it can go out immediately to the world. To where we, when we were kids, you had to get filmed, you had to go send that away and someone had to send it back to you two weeks later before you even got it back. And by the time you got it back, you were like, oh my God, what did I do? So now it's you quickly hit send and it's out. So we understand that, but it's important that we uh are, we teach our students that there can be severe consequences. So this was tonight was to try to to get the parents involved. So I I I last I looked, I thought I saw about uh forty parents online. Uh, we have twelve or fifteen people here as well, right? So we're talking fifty people, right? Now, in a district of thirteen hundred, that's not a lot, but fifty people talked to five to ten people and they say, hey, this is going on. Your message is please notify the school and we can do something about it. So that's how something like this small, right? If you you're at school, you're in schoolyards picking up, you're on social media, right? Bogota family pages, Bogota pages, right? I get screenshots of all the time and what's being said, so I'm in the loop. I won't join because I'll get too many questions on a normal basis, but it's important that you just say, please contact the school. Please let the school know. That's what I'm asking. And again, they're kids, they're going to make mistakes, right? Our job is not to hammer a kid, right, and ruin the rest of their life. We're not looking to do that, but we want to make sure that they understand that certain behavior can lead to a serious punishment that you're not going to be able to take back. All right, and that's what our open dialogue with the police department uh has been from day one is working with kids. What is the best thing to help this kid, his family, do the right thing the next time? So I really want to make that point because, you know, you hear station house adjustments, you hear uh, you know, they could be arrested. There are some things that are nonnegotiable that that we we I I can't have a station house adjustments for this. But there are other things that we don't want to uh bury a kid ten feet and say, well, good luck getting out of there over the next four or five years. So I want to really get that point across. So I do see.
A- and I want to say, me and Mr. Kennedy probably speak uh once a week at least, at a minimum. And we don't have those problems that a lot of other jurisdictions are having, I think because we address it quickly. Uh, I think we work well together. Uh, so I don't want anybody to think that Bogota is having a a a huge issue. We're not. We address it quickly. We jump on it right away. When we saw these videos, uh we sat down with Mr. Kennedy and that's why we decided to throw this because we don't want it to be like other jurisdictions. We don't have that here. Uh, and you know, it's it's very rare, believe it or not, to have the closeness between the police department and the schools. A lot of jurisdictions don't have that, but we do here. You know, we know all the principals. We, you know, our sleos are in the schools. Uh, they come back telling me minor things that are going on, nothing, you know, you know, so we're on top of it right away. A- and and I got to say for for the school, you know, I'm impressed at how quickly y- you work and address the issues and and help us with our job out there. Uh, I think what what we were trying to explain with with the charges, most of those things he's talking about, the station house adjustments, and and it's it's more of an intervention that we're trying to to jump in there before it becomes something serious. Because I can't tell you how many good candidates I have when we go hire a police officer come in and then we see they have one juvenile charge that's going to knock them out. A- and I think that's what we're trying to to say here. That one stupid mistake that they make that can't be negotiated can affect them for the rest of their lives. So hopefully we can nip it in the butt before it gets to that point.
And, and I, I, I say the school is doing a fantastic job with that. And my officers, like I said, we'll, we'll see it right away and we try to address it. And I just think as a community, we're all working well together. And I wanna thank everybody here for doing that.
I mean, the one thing about Bogota is we are small, so news travels quickly. Like something happens five blocks away at five o'clock, there's a good chance by seven o'clock I got a text or an email or a phone call about it. So, you know, that is the beauty of a small town and a tight-knit community. So there, I got a couple of questions online that I wanna read and the first one is something I wanted to address. So if there is a fight and a student records and posts it, is there any punishment that they will receive? I feel punishment for recording and posting these things to happen and hopefully that will return them from making serious matters become entertainment. That is one hundred percent. What, what I think this students, and I don't wanna say this out loud, but it's important that I say this. They're giving us all the evidence that we need. They are giving the police department the evidence when these things are posted on social media. We have it down to a science now where if there's three or four multiple angles of the fight, you usually can see who's recording from the other side. And we're able to, to, to deal with those students and they are dealt with and their parents are called. So yes, one hundred percent. To me, the kids that are there rooting on the fight, that are actually engulfing the flames are part of, oops, sorry, are part of the problem as well. And we are definitely addressing that with the students and there is punishment for that. Because the fight happens, if no one goes to watch the fight and no one's recording it, they don't fight. Nine times out of ten. But when there's kids egging them on and firing them up, they will fight. Someone else also just said, I just wanted to thank you for taking the time to address this and acknowledge the severity of the situation. In order to raise productive young adults, we first need to make them understand that actions have consequences. They need to learn conflict resolution, acknowledge there is a problem. It's a step in the right direction. Thank you for your effort. So thank you for that. So if anyone in the, in the audience would like, just please stand up one at a time. Do we have a microphone, Frank? Just so the people at home can hear you, please.
I have actually a couple of questions. And my first question is gonna base off of your comment about you watching these videos and, you know, there are consequences for that. Does that go for the videos of the kids fighting outside of the school property?
So that's where it becomes very, we don't, I cannot really punish kids for off-campus behavior. Right? Such as a fight like that. So if they're recording that fight, I will ask our principals to maybe contact their parents and let them know. But legally, I cannot give them detention or suspend them. I can't suspend the kids for fighting. Now, if they come to school the next day and there's words and it's affecting the next day, then I can act on it. And there was just recently a big Supreme Court ruled, a, someone posted something on social media about like F the cheerleaders, who cares anyway, cause she didn't make it. It went all the way to the Supreme Court and they ruled she's allowed to do that. The school could not punish her. So, you know, we have our hands tied, but we can call the parents and say, just so you know, there was a fight outside. Your child was there, your child was recording it. Now, the kids have gotten slick to the point where they're posting it to an anonymous Instagram page, which takes time for subpoena, which we're trying to work with. We, we send them emails and saying this should not be post, this is not a proper channel to have, but we're trying to get to the bottom of it and we're hoping that there is. But again, we, we tell the students like, we know what happens because you're sending us a video of it and it's getting posted to an open platform on Instagram that anyone can view. So it's, it's dicey. So the, the conversation.
I understand your point on that. I guess for me, it's more about if you guys are seeing this video and yes, it's not on school property, but what are you doing? Are you letting the parents know, listen, this came to my attention? Because sometimes parents don't know what's going on. As much as we wanna think we know everything that our kids are doing, we don't. So it does take a village. So that was more along the lines where I was going. Or, you know, so you, you know of this. Are you letting the parents know that this is coming across my desk? And I wanted to know if you knew, you know, because then we're, I feel like nothing is really gonna happen if the parents aren't being made aware of the situation.
So I will tell you, yes, I ask our building administrators to reach out to the parents. First of the kids fighting, right? And then second, anyone we can identify in a video. Sometimes we can, sometimes we can, but we do our best. And we will call up the parents and say, hey, there was a fight off campus. Just so you know, your kid was there egging it on. You might wanna have a conversation because they might be able to get in trouble. Right? So we always tell the parent of the kids fighting, you know, this is a police matter. So if a parent wants to press charges, please contact the police and have that conversation if they felt their kid was getting beat up. Someone else also wrote, what if the child is passing around the video in school? Yes. If we have proof, if a video is recorded in school, we just caught someone the other day, that was dealt with severely and that person will be, deal with the consequences.
My second question is, will there be a presentation of this up at the high school?
So that, I was gonna say, so this was the opening act and then next we're gonna have our, our PD come in and, and go a little deeper into what can happen to students and consequences by grade levels. So yes, we want to have this first to get the parents on board, to know what we're talking about. And then they will be coming in and meeting with individual grades. And I, I, I'm willing to go, we're going down to sixth grade, I think, at this point, and maybe even the fifth grade at that, so be it. As a high school VP, I've been in Bogota since two thousand nine. I was the VP. The problems I was seeing in tenth and eleventh grade, I'm now seeing in seventh and sixth grade. So they're getting too old too quick. Moving the seventh graders out of here was a, a big help because they're not seeing the older kids. But everyone follows everyone on social media and they see it. I mean, these guys on TikTok are making millions. Everyone thinks they can make a million dollars on social media because, you know, these guys are. So, you know, it's important that they understand that there can be severe consequences to you being, following, doing some of these things. So a hundred percent, yes, they will be meeting. It was this meeting first then with the students. That's why I didn't push this out to the students tonight, because I think it needs to be a different message from the parents to us and then to the students, what they need to hear.
Great. And my third question is, what exactly is the process and protocol for suspicion of the kids vaping in the bathroom? What, what exactly is the rundown on that? How is that handled?
So if it's a suspicion, I mean, if you catch them vaping, they're, they're called down immediately to the office and they're suspended from school. If we think they put it in their pockets right away, we ask them to empty their pockets. We could go through their bags. I've heard rumors of strip searches. That is not happening. I mean, that's, I, 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 I've spoken to my administration team on that. No one is touching students. No one is asking them to remove clothing. But the kids are, so the kids are hiding the vapes on them and they know we can't get it. So it's kind of like, how do we go about this? Do we just ignore it because they, we know we have it on them? Do I call a parent and say, can you please come in here and search your child for us because we know we have it on them? So there's a lot going into that right now. So it's, it's, we're asking our administration team to cut down the vaping, but we're tying their hands because we can only do so much.
I understand and I agree. But I also think that to, to every story, there's two sides to it. And, you know, as much as we could sit here and we hope that, you know, these rumors aren't true, they shouldn't be disregarded either.
And I'll say this, please have any parent contact me if they felt something went on wrong, because I have not received one complaint about it. That's all I can speak on it. So if a parent calls me and says something, I will look into it. And if something did not happen, if something happened that shouldn't have happened, that will be dealt with.
Thank you.
Good evening. I wish you guys had this meeting a month ago. Excuse me. I pulled my son out of middle school two weeks ago because he was being tormented every day. He got into a fight outside of school, actually on a Sunday in Teaneck with a Teaneck resident. He was with a bunch of middle school students from Bogota. No one helped him. They took out their phones and videotaped it, spread it all around the school. And every day my son went to that school, he was tormented. I'm sorry, I'm shaking. I went to the principal the Monday morning after it happened, eight o'clock in the morning, sitting in his office. He told me he was gonna handle it. He talked to the kids that were on the video, because I told them the kids' names, that my son told me that we're not doing anything. I also went to the Teaneck Police Department and I'm working with them as to this day. He got the video from the kids' phones and that's pretty much the last I've heard of it. I don't know if they got in trouble. He told them to erase it off their phones and the next time it happens, something will be done. Okay. So weeks go by, my son's being bullied and tormented by things that happened on the video to him. Sorry. Anyway, so I went back to the school again to tell them that my son had enough. He wasn't saying much to me because he didn't wanna be a snitch, get anybody in trouble. He finally had enough, told his teacher, it, it, it happens every day. She was very kind to him, made him go down to the counselor, he talked to him, her, then talked to Dr. Alfonso. That was at twelve o'clock in the afternoon. My son came home three o'clock. He said, did the school call you? I said, no. And I asked him what happened. And he just said, I had enough. And I told, I said, good, good for you. But I haven't heard anything from the school yet. I called the school. They were busy in the meeting. They called me back. Fine. I was very upset because what I heard again was, well, Mrs. Carney, it, he said, he said. No, that's not enough. And the next time it happens, well, how many times does it have to happen to my son? I took care of it, ripped him out of the school. Now he's going to another school. That's how it's gonna be handled from out for me, because I felt like I had no support from the middle school. My biggest mistake was not coming to you, Superintendent Kennedy, and I apologize for that. I should have, but I did not. It was the heat of the moment and I'm, I'm having my decision, by the way. But something needs to be done or educate your principal on how it goes because he had the video. He knows what kids were in the video and I don't think anything happened to these kids. Were the parents even called? I don't, I have no idea, because nothing was transparent to me at all. So if I could help another parent, don't do what I did, or do what I did, because I'm proud what I did. But help your kids and I, I don't know, I'm sorry, I'm shaking. But I just hope that these kids do get in some kind of trouble or reprimanded, something. I don't wanna ruin their lives, but they can't do this and get away with it every single day. Because it's gonna be some other ones, kids.
So here's what I will say is that when investigations do happen, they're not always going to tell you what happens to the student. Just like we wouldn't, if your student got in trouble, that we wouldn't say, we wouldn't tell you, I wouldn't talk about your child to another parent. You know what I mean? Like, we're pretty strict on that. Like, so I can tell you anything that is brought to us is going to be looked into, investigated. At the end, yes. At the end, yes. So when you were, when you were moving out, when you, I think your, your mother called me. Or someone called me. I had, his grandmother called me. Someone called me that was related to him and told me about the story. Like the whole thing about the, I knew there was a fight outside of school that involved other students. I knew about that. But I'd never heard of anything else going on in school.
The principal come to you and tell, and tell you anything about what happened with my son?
Outside of school? Yes, with the, the original fight? Yes. Yes.
And the video?
Yes.
Okay. So the kids that took the video and spread it around town, what happened?
They were dealt with. I, I can't give you that information is what I'm telling you. So the only thing I would say though is that after that initial complaint, right? But, but that's what I'm saying, like you said that your son did the same thing to you until weeks later? Yeah, but no, I'm saying after the fight though, you went in and that was dealt with from my understanding. And then you said that your son was still getting picked on. But did you bring that back to his attention after that? Right. But is that the day you transferred him out? Okay, that, that's what I'm saying though, if you would, the first time your son, well, that's what I'm trying to say though, is that the first time something happens after that, if we know about it, we can do something about it. Like, I, I can't, I don't know if I can, if he doesn't know, if I can be upset that he didn't do anything. If you didn't call him up and say, look, this fight happened, the last two weeks have been good, but now my son is telling me that they're, they said something to him or they're picking on him. Then that's, I have a big problem with that. But if you're telling me that he finally got upset and said, I'm getting picked on, I don't wanna do this anymore, and you transferred him out, like you didn't give us the information, you know what I mean? It's like after the initial fight? Well, that, I mean, that's. But what would they tell her, I guess? What would they tell her? Originally, yes, it was off-campus. It was on a Sunday in Teaneck. So from my understanding.
Earlier mentioned that when the kid has a video and it's being passed around in school, that the, the phone, there's consequences. Is it consequences for the kid that's passing it around that you're talking about? Or consequences for who's in the video that we're talking about?
Passing, well, the, it only depends where did it take place? Did it happen in school or off-school grounds? The passing in school, we can deal with.
And it happened, okay, it's, all right, passing in, if it happened in school, you can deal with.
If we can prove that it was sent in school, yes.
Sent in school?
If it's, yes, like how, how did the video go from one person to another?
Okay, so like a timestamp kind of thing you're talking about?
Something like that, yes. Like if there's proof of that going around, yes. It's, it's not black and white where, like if the kid is doing that, is passing that video around and then teasing the kid, yes, we are dealing with that.
Regardless of the video being an incident that happened off-campus, this is what, that's what I'm trying to clear.
It's only so much that we can do, but you can contact the parents in the video, yes, like I said before.
Okay. I kind of agree with, I'm sorry, I don't know your name now. Bernadette, Trina Olivo. I kind of agree with that years, years before. My youngest daughter was involved in an incident and I did set a complaint. It was while she was in middle school. Which happens to be a lot of where most of our issues are in this town. That, that seventh and eighth grade transition has always been an issue. And I know that we worked tirelessly on both ends, parents and staff and, and the superintendent, Board of Ed, we were tirelessly trying to figure out ways to, to, to help that behavior stop. But I did have that incident also. So we're talking about back in two thousand, I wanna say fourteen, maybe two thousand thirteen. And we did bring it up to the counselor's attention, what was going on. It was an incident that had happened in school. Was, it was carried outside of the school as well. And I understand what was done, could have been, what was done in the school was done in the school was, was what you guys were responsible for. But I also felt, and I actually had to reach out to people that I knew to ask what that protocol was. But if I was a parent that didn't have connections, I would feel, I would have felt lost, like she, Bernadette is explaining, explaining that she felt. I, I understand you can't tell us what happens, what you're doing with them, but there's. I, I understand you can't tell us what happens, what you're doing with them, but there's, has to be some kind of ease of mind for the parent, sending their child to school every day, to know that they're, they're safe once they walk through those doors, and you're doing the best that you can, the same way we're doing the best we can. You know, so if, if that can be, as a parent, I'm saying, if that's something that can be looked at to help the parents with the children that are feeling lost, and now the parents are feeling lost, that would be, I think, a wonderful help.
Okay, and I think tonight, that, that's where we're trying to get the dialogue going, but also when I send out my announcements about the Speak Up app and how you can reach out anonymously, or please contact your building principal, or contact me directly. That's the only way that I can get involved. If I'm not made aware of it, I cannot deal with it. Same thing with our building principal. So I'm sorry that did happen to you, and like you said, I wish you did contact me, you know, a month and a half ago, and then maybe we could have got it, but again, I think it's, what do we know is how can we handle it? So we don't know after the initial incident that he was still being made fun of or given a hard time, we couldn't, we couldn't handle it. So that's, that's, that's all I could say on that.
I wanted to ask a question outside of that, so I'm not sure, Bernadette, is there anything else you wanted to? Okay, did anybody else want to tag on to that before I talk out of a different topic? You mentioned that now, this is part one, and now we're going to be going into the next steps, which is having law enforcement come in and speak with our children, and I, and I like that. I think we are such a small town that a lot of our kids know who all of you are, well, for the most part. You know, unless there's a new face and they have an encounter, it's always interesting to hear what the encounter with the new face is. And then, you know, we all get to know each other, and it's, ah, Mikey, you know, that, sorry, I didn't mean to bring my kid's name into it, you know, it's that kind of thing. But I worry that my kid does not know all the time what his rights are. And there are a lot of parents that do not know how to have these conversations, and I'm sorry that that has to fall on the hands of our, our staff, our educators, and law enforcement. You know, you, you know everything that's going on about the opinions so many people have that are not so great about law enforcement now. In the last two years, it's escalated. I don't want my, I have law enforcement in my family, and I don't want my child thinking that way. But at the same time, I, I don't know what else, I'm not, you know, this brain, you kind of put one thing in, and I've lost something that maybe I knew a year ago. So there, I may not know all the rights that I can pass on to my child also to let them know what is okay and what is not okay. And that's that I have conversations with my child. Maybe it's just too much Law and Order that I watch, you know? But there are parents that don't do that, because they don't know how, or because they really think, "Not my child", and you know, that's unfortunate, but it does happen. So along with the next step of this, that we're hoping to, to, you know, add on to this evening with our children, will the conversation be, will, will them, knowing what their rights are and how they can protect themselves, be added into that conversation that you have with our children? I really think it's very important that they know, even from you guys, what is it that's okay and what's not okay?
And I'm hoping that, I think that's what started tonight. I'm hoping that we can continue, maybe every so many months, have a, a different topic to bring up, so we can start addressing the kids. And a lot of it is, you know, like you're saying, some of them do not trust us at this point. And we're trying to break, I hope that would start with the slios that we have in the schools now, because those are all law enforcement officers that are retired. So I was hoping that that would start breaking down the doors, and, you know, that's not something that happens overnight with them having trust with us. I don't know if you saw the video, or one of our officers was out there playing football with the kids. That's what starts breaking the doors now. And I think it's important that we have this line of communication, and that's why I think this is great that we're doing this tonight. Because I think we are trying, as this community, we are trying to do that. You know, we're, we're trying to reach out to the kids.
And prove a point.
Yeah.
They don't know their consequences.
Correct.
They think they can just keep doing this.
Correct. And I'll be honest with you, you know, I find out all my stuff, I always laugh. I, I'm a coach, so I coach football, baseball, and basketball. I drive the kids, I got a big minivan, okay, I drive the kids. I listen on everything that's going on, because they just keep talking. So I know what's going on in the school. I know who's doing something wrong. I know who did something in the bathroom and ruined it. And it's not just even us and the school, it's everybody. We all have to work together. This social media is scaring me. Like I said, when I sat there and I heard my daughter saying they're bullying this girl, and I'm like, "Who is it?", and she goes, "Nah, you just have, you don't know." She's an 11-year-old girl, and she's aware of this. I didn't even know that, it tells you how old I am, I didn't even know that at that point. You know, that they have these apps out there. And the problem we have, and I know you said you were going through with the school, is even when we're subpoenaing, we can't get them. They don't give it to us anymore. You know, there's such a silence about, "You can't get the information", you know, and I talked to Detective Larry Anno, who's very good at the IC stuff, and it's like, "Chief, we just, we put it in, they're not going to give it to us." So even when we see some of these things going on, and we're trying to get it, we're running up against walls.
See, as a parent, that's great for me to hear, because I know you're trying, and it's other battles that you have to, you know, hurdles that you have to try to go, get through in order to help us even more with that.
And it wasn't always that.
Before that, I did, yes, I know, because things are starting to get, before you know it, "Oh, no, now you can't look at that, now you can't touch that, you're not allowed to." You know, there's laws that end up getting put to, to protect things that they shouldn't be protecting, but it's their right, their civil rights. I understand that. But before, I didn't know that. So I didn't know that there's the, that wonderful Instagram post that goes, I'm sorry, Instagram that goes around. Yeah, that, that, that goes around. I mean, I, I didn't know that that's what our school's trying to do, but I like hearing it, because now I know that no one's just turning a blind eye, and I understand, and the further I get involved with communities, the more, the more I understand how red tape just gets wider, wider, longer, longer, and harder to cut than, than ever. But to know that, you know, we're having conversations about it really does help.
And it's a very fine line, like, he gave his presentation on the station house adjustment, you know, we talked to them in the street, to being charged. It's very serious to be charged, you know, if you're being charged, it's something serious. But there's always, it's such a fine line with the deer with juveniles, with the judicial system, and just being able to talk to them and try to get them in a different direction.
So what you're saying is correct, and these things don't happen overnight.
No.
So here in her experience with her, her child, that's something that was going, and yes, you know, we have to learn as parents too, we need to speak up a bit more. And I understand where that miscommunication, hearing it here for the first time, I can see where the miscommunication might have been, and where it could have maybe had a different result if something else was done. But it's just, if you, if you're, if you have that, that child or the group of children constantly thinking that they can get away with these things, how, how is it that we are actually nipping it in the butt, you know? It, it's just, it's just...
It takes time, so you have to build on it.
So, okay, again, so it doesn't happen overnight, but when, when her, if her child would have gotten hurt again, then it would have been like, "Oh my God", you know?
And sometimes that's a shame, that sometimes it goes from one incident to the next time somebody gets hurt.
So, so, right, no, 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 which, that's why I'm appreciating this, this and this back and forth dialogue. It's so important. And I wish more parents were here. I was happy to hear that he said 40 were online. That made me like a sigh of relief a little bit. And I, it's just, I, the, the conversation needs to continue happening.
Absolutely. Chief, I know we're, we're discussing juvenile, but the overall criminal system today, you can catch an adult, and I think they can attest to this, some years ago, back when I was serving on the side of the council, certain laws were enacted where you can act, actually catch an adult committing a pretty serious crime, and it goes into a database, and there's a lot of factors. So if they've never been arrested, and God knows how many times, but they committed this crime, then they're released, and they're supposed to appear in court. And we've heard around the country that many folks, those criminals, end up leaving, and you know, you're almost innocent until proven guilty in the Western atmosphere, but there, there, there have been, there's been people that I can call criminals now, because they leave the police department with a summons, a quarter period's ticket, and they commit the crime again. And they've been released a second time by another. So just imagine what everyone's facing with juvenile, where it's an even more of a sensitive discussion. There's a lot of things you can't discuss. And I, and I see them, because I see them grab their hair from time to time in the past. I can't believe that I have to release this individual when you know that this is going to happen pretty quick. So there's a lot of delicate issue to discussing juveniles and what the follow-up is and everything else. I, I do want to say, and today I'm speaking as a parent, you know, everyone, I think everyone hears as a parent, nothing to do with what we do on an elective side. We are pushing to have more discussions on, I think all of us are as parents. It takes a lot of parent involvement to really drive this message, and this may have to become a bi-monthly thing or a quarterly thing, and, and we become, as parents, we have to be advocates of our own children's future, and that includes your neighbor's child and your community children. There, you know, they, there's a very delicate balance between what your rights are and what's right from wrong, and what your consequences should be, and, and I discuss that with my children constantly.
That's why we need to continue this.
Absolutely, I agree.
The parents that do not get to educate themselves about it, or know it, or, you know, like I said, they know somebody, so they reach out. You know, I, I do have one more question, I'm sorry, once you're done, Frank.
No, all I want to say is that we need to teach our children that your actions have consequences. And, and, and there's a lot of articles that speak on behalf of today's parenting, that we're some of the best parents ever seen, but we're busy, we're working, we try to give everything to our children, and we don't take anything away from it. You know, we, we, part of teaching them this process is, they almost build the backbone, they learn to speak up as we once did, or, or our generation did, and that's something, you know, look through their phones. I too have that practice. The phone is mine. We're just lending you a phone to communicate with us, not even your friends, with us. And a lot of people fear, parents fear in doing that and giving that consequence. They're worried about the tantrums. "We're going to take this away from you." Well, you have to earn things, and, and that's kind of a behavior that starts at a very young age, and we have to work as a community, we got to continue to thrive and drive these, these seminars and, and town hall meetings, so that, I, I think it's shameful to have only 50 parents, right? But it's a great start. It's a great start, but you know, I've seen on a newspaper in other states, parents got involved, they created a, a bully committee, and that's maybe something we have to do. We, we, I think maybe we need to do, look into something, and, and that bully committee, or that, you know, HIV committee, isn't that, Hib, isn't it what it's called? So maybe that's something we should look into, and, and it takes 50 parents to start the conversation across, across our town.
And educating each other.
Well, that's why I asked the question. I asked, like, how, what, what should we be doing? Because that's our goal, right? Our collective goal is to increase engagement. So it, it, it's easy for us to say, "Well, what are you doing?", but the reason why I asked the question is because, okay, what, what can we do? What should we be doing? If we want more engagement from the school, how do we, how do we foster that? How do we get that beyond complaining that we don't have it, or feeling that, that we're being disenfranchised in some way as parents, because we're not getting whatever left cycle of communication we want? So I think that we have to ask ourselves, okay, what do we, what do we want to do? How do we want to get, how do we want to get there? Because I know, you know, my oldest daughter is, is, is a grown woman with a family of her own, but I recall when she was in Ridgefield Park High School, there was a, a situation, and I was told I needed to come in, and the other parent was told they needed, we needed to come in, and we sat at a table with both kids, and we hammered it out. Now, I don't know if in 2022, you know, the, the, the guardrails that have been put up around things don't allow for that anymore, but I do know both kids, they, we had to leave there with resolution as parents. I felt better as a parent, like, okay, I, I know this little girl, I know her mom, and now with the school collectively, we've ironed this out. They went on to be best friends to this day, today. So I, I feel like we, as parents, should not be waiting for the solution to come to us. Instead, we should be saying, "This is the level of engagement that we'd like. Are we allowed to, you know, to have that?"
Exactly.
I, I, I wanted to, because before you make any statement, you don't know what happens until it happens to you. And Bernadette, I wanted to apologize on behalf of being your neighbor, right? I can't, I'm just shocked to hear that, because I didn't, I didn't have anything, and I know Joseph from a very, very, very young age, and we've had some good times together. So I'm sorry, and, and it frustrates me, because no taxpayer, a resident of Bogota should have to even leave our district, no matter what. And it has to be dealt with, and, and I think everyone agrees that that should not have happened. I don't know what exactly transpired, but we're going to have to do a better job, and, and you know what? It's maybe going to take some of us to teach parents how to parent, how to do parenting. You know, I'm, I can't sit here and say I'm a perfect parent, but I am trying. And what, the words I'm hearing coming out of my own kid's mouth is shocking. I said to Kennedy the other day, "My seven-year-old sounds like a 10-year-old, and I'm scared. I'm truly scared." And if you're not scared, anyone hearing this, you're not scared as a parent today, then you're really not engaged with your children. So we need parental engagement. We need to get involved. I think with the current 50 people here, it starts something. And I know, like, I know most of you are your faces, and you're truly involved, and you speak up. So we're going to have to really drive this message. I implore you to do that.
And I, I did want to say, so there's monthly PTO meetings, like, a lot of these things can be discussed with building-specific administrators to, like, so we are having these meetings where our administrators are showing up, and you have a chance to speak at them and discuss them, and pull an administrator to the side and talk to them. So it's like, we could do these, and I, and I know the 50 people that are going to be here, right? I, I can guess, right, from being around a long time, but we got to get, it's, it's, we have 1,300 students. Right? That's, we have a lot of students here. We're growing day by day. So being involved with the PTO, right, in your buildings, I understand we have kids in multiple buildings, but that meeting has happened monthly, where parents can talk to the administrator, talk about problems that they're seeing.
I know, it's hard to get back to that, because we've been out of that for two years. It's, but hopefully we do get back into that rhythm.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chavez, just before you do, I just want to tag on, I did kind of put law enforcement on notice, I guess you can say, asking if you guys would mind explaining to our young adults also what their rights are, but I do ask of that of our staff as well. You know, I think it's very important. I did not like to hear the words that came out of my son's mouth the other day, "Why are we going to bother saying anything about it if nothing's going to be done?", and that's a kid that has a mom that's involved. You know, so imagine a kid that their parents are working two jobs or just are not as involved. I, that hurt me to hear my kid say that to me, you know, so now I, I feel it's, as a parent, it's extremely important that we put that on to other parents, to let them know that they have to continue educating their children about what their rights are, and I would hope that we can see a little bit of that also from our staff, when they're, when these conversations begin, you know, and everybody gets on the same page, letting these young adults, now we're supposed to be bringing into this world to be great human beings and great adults, you know, giving them the proper tools instead of leaving them to be on their own.
Well, one of, one of the biggest things that I think that everybody, child or adult, what to remember is, this is America, and we have a First Amendment right to use our voice, and we need to empower our children to speak for themselves as well. We have a board meeting every month. They don't come. They, I, we hear endless complaints about lunch and uniform and this or that, and the other thing. And I say to, to my kids especially, "Okay, good, that you told me, great, but there's nine of us sitting there. So I think you better come and tell the other eight, because I'm not going to speak for you. I don't go to this school, you do. I don't have to eat that pizza, you do. I don't have to wear that shirt, you do." So if, I think that it is, we've, we've come off of this pandemic, which was siloed living at its worst, and, you know, most of our children are struggling to get back to any semblance of social norm, but I think this is a perfect time for us to empower them. Speak up for yourself. You know, there's a hotline, there's an email. Speak up, tell, tell somebody what's going on.
Before, and I'm sorry to interrupt you, Ms. Bernadette, before you go, I wanted to say something to you, and I, I do apologize... I do apologize what happened to you. Um, as a parent, we are on the board of education and I think this has been. I think this is the first in a long time that you have board members that have kids also in the middle school. I can tell you personally, I know how you feel because I'm going through something similar. Um, obviously we can't give you details. I can't give details. Things happen. We have to figure it out and see what we do. But you're not alone and that's what we want to give you. We need to, we need to let you know that we're also going through this. I get choked up myself when I, when I speak about this because I am going through this firsthand. Um, what I want you to understand is that we are a community. That I want you to thank and on it, obviously not you, but I want to thank Superintendent Kennedy, the board, Chief May, Sergeant Cole and. Detective Liriano for being here and for even opening this up because this is a problem. This is something that it's, that should be addressed. It should have been addressed a long time ago. But again, baby steps and we just got here. So we are trying to change everything. I know that um it's very hard because I was in your position and this is why I ran. This is why I, I put myself out there. Because I felt like all of you with no answers.
And remind everyone that we have counselors, we have the, the care program. That, it is a big deal, like that to have. Access to real live counselors during your school day. I know I didn't have that. I know I, you know, we have guidance counselor who was uber busy, right?
And just to remind you.
We have counselors.
You can actually contact each and every one of us individually. There's emails, there's, you know. Phone numbers, whatever you need to do. Even if you contact me, I will try to help you as much as I can. We are here for everyone. Again, I'm talking to you as a parent that's going through the same thing you are. And, and I want you to feel that because it's very important for us. That you understand that it's, you're not alone, that we are with you. I, I'm, I'm really sad in that you went out of district. And I'm not going to lie to you. I've, I've thought the same thing. And, and yes, but. Again, we are the example. We are the people who are trying to change things and we will get there. And I promise you, we will be better with time.
With a good message to the community is that. And I won't speak on behalf of the entire board, but I've gotten a general consensus with their faces, they're speaking up. That we are a united front with the police department, the mayor and council, and we're going to fight change. One of the biggest things that, that I think the school, so I, if everyone remembers. SLEOs, which were, you know, officers in our schools was more driven because of fear and, and I'm sure that's how people thought, right? The school shootings, but SLEOs are there to show a, a police presence, to find these vaping issues, to find other issues. And, and maybe as a message here is that we might need something called a school resource officer. Someone that constantly can educate our children, you know, do presentations. Do seminars, do things that are consistently educating the children and, and even the parents. So. I think that uh it's probably a discussion as a community to find out if it's something that we need and we need to hear you say that. Um, we need to hear you because we have board event meetings as well. We noticed they're small, you know, they're greatly attended now, but. But not enough speaking and we're okay with that. We want to hear you. We're parents. We want you to know, I want you to know that I feel just like you. Because I'm hearing it from my friends, my friends' children, from my own child, and it means something to me. And I say me personally because I have to, you know, I'm here as a resident. So I'm just letting you know that it means something to everyone here. And I think there's a question on the chat that Kennedy wants to address. Before you go, Sheri, because I think.
I just, there's a bunch of questions that I haven't been able to get to because everyone's been talking, which is great. Uh, question, this is probably more for the PD. Is there any known gang activity in town that could be contributing to these events?
No, there isn't. Not that, not that we're aware, not that we're aware of, there is.
Okay. Also, we have a large Latino population. Several parents are not English speakers. Will a meeting be provided in Spanish? We can definitely talk about that. I will not be able to host that meeting, uh, but I will be able. I will be able to get um our point across for uh those parents and we can, we did it once before. Uh, during the pandemic where we had specific uh meetings for Spanish-speaking parents only. Uh, I think the code of conduct should be sent to all parents to sign and acknowledge. Um, yes, the students sign, the parents should also sign and make a commitment to help students follow the code of conduct. I'm not a hundred percent sure. I know we posted on our website. I'm not sure if we send a link home.
In September, in real time, you have to read through it and then you, you, the parent acknowledge it and then the kid goes in and they do.
So I, but I could definitely, but we have, it's listed on our website. So it's available to go back and reference. Uh, it's what like, if something happens and administrator asks me a question, I'll say, what does our code of conduct say? What is the consequences? So it's, it's, we follow that. Uh, as a parent, I need to note from the school administrator that there were consequences to the other kids, a result of them bullying my child. I need assurances from the school administrator that it will not continue. I understand you'll not be able to name. Uh, names of the kids involved, but we also know, uh, or, but we need to know the consequences. Uh, that the parent notified and there was consequence. So I definitely will reiterate that uh to our parents. Sometimes it, it goes through the process where it gets board approved and then parents are reached out to and that could take month. Um, but I will definitely reiterate to our parents and our council, uh, to our administrators and counselors that. Um, we're keeping people in the loop. That's very important about what's going on. Also, if I send an email communication to a school administrator, I should receive acknowledgement that my communication was received and is being looked into. Non-response has been an issue here in my experience. Please. Notify me if teachers, if administrators are not responding. Um, I, I can only speak to myself. I, I. Press upon this on my administrators. If you email me, I'm going to respond that I got it. And I'm going to get back to you. And I like to usually do that with a phone call because it gets easier. To have a conversation instead of going back and forth on an email. So again, if, if you are reaching out to an administrator. Um, again, the, the really, the check and balance of this whole system is my job is to oversee the school buildings and the principals. Right? The principals are responsible for the teachers, right? So if you're reaching out to a teacher and the teacher's not responding, email the principal. If the principal is not responding, you email me. If I don't respond, then you come to a board meeting and say, I emailed this person, that person, that person, this person. No one's got back to me. It's been three weeks. Then I got a problem. Right? But I always ask, I even tell when, uh, I, I always tell a, a person, just copy me on an email. Usually people respond immediately when I'm copied always. Uh, so that's good practice when we need it. Uh, Sheri, you're up.
Thank you. Um, I, I think this is super important. I'll try to make it quick, but I think such an important uh conversation to have. Um, my first, uh, I have a comment and then questions. My heart breaks for uh Ms. Bernie, uh Bernadette Kearney and her, and her son. Um, I know that a lot of us have gone through uh situations like this. It breaks our heart. And we try to do the most we can, but are we really doing uh enough about it as a community? I do not envy the positions of the administrators. I do not believe that the law is on the law enforcement side. Uh, like B C said back in the day, I mean, I'm aging myself, but you know, if there was a fight, parents would get together and uh. They would hash it out. And like she said, there was a resolution of some sort. Um, and the administrators had some kind of uh, you know, jurisdiction. Um, right now I feel like all, all the jurisdictions kind of taken away from. Um, our leaders and they're kind of left with their hands tied and kind of uh, you know, put, uh, put against a wall. I as an adult moving into Bogota have been bullied as an adult. Social media is a beast. And uh it was excessive, it was harassment, it was uh, what was the words being used? Um, repetitive, it was annoying annoyance. Um, it was many things. And I think as a community, we need to start making that type of narrative very uncomfortable. If we as parents see things going on on social media and you know that it's not right. You know that it's unwarranted, you know that it is not something you would want done unto your child. And you just turn your back to it because you don't want to get involved. You are part of the problem. We need to start making this type of narrative very uncomfortable. So we need to, you know, not only. Uh, talk about it, but be about it. I'm very happy that Detective Rivera asked me to be part of Crime Stoppers. And now together with Rebecca, we are starting to um create more community events with our law enforcement. To now maybe gain some respect and trust from our youth because I think that's a big issue. Uh, so that's something that I'm very proud to be part of. I think as PTO president, we've opened up. Excuse me, uh, for a lot of uh positive and uh important discussions. We've allowed for a very welcoming and uh. And, and nice, God forbid, we're nice to each other. We've, we've uh created a very welcoming and nice environment where people. Are proud to come to our meetings, speak up, give their opinion without being worried about their head being chopped off for something that might not be. The most popular uh opinion. I'm, I don't care about popular opinion. I want to hear about what you have to say. So I guess my question um would be as an adult of kids being harassed, I've had letters sent to my house. Had rumors uh put out on me. I've been harassed on social media consistently for years. What is it that can be done? Because it starts at home. So if we don't check ourselves at home. And then we look at our kids, what could possibly be wrong? Yeah, that child is a product of you. So what could somebody do? As an adult, now I'm asking the PD, that feels like they are being threatened via social media. Or whatever the case is targeted in some sort of way. My other question is regarding the SLEOs. What is their, uh, not their position, but what are they allowed and not allowed to do? Because coming from a parent with children in the elementary school, I hear a lot, uh, the common denominator is recess and lunch. A lot of the issues are happening during recess and lunch. The teachers, not their fault because of course they are not, they are on their own lunch break. The SLEOs are usually there with some type of aid. What are they allowed and not allowed to do? Do we expect them to be full-on disciplinarians? Absolutely not. But what are they, are they allowed to just be a presence? Hey, cut that out. Hey, you know, don't do that or walk around. What are they allowed and not allowed to do? So we don't then hold them accountable for something that maybe they have no pullover.
I think it's the severity of what's occurring. If it's a, an incident where a kid may be uh having an issue with another kid. They will usually take them to administration. We, we, they won't deal with that at a law enforcement.
Right.
You know, a, a, and, and they shouldn't be in the school setting.
Right.
Uh, because I don't, to be honest with you, and I tell all my SLEOs this, I don't want you being there and your kids being afraid of you. Then it kind of destroys the reason that they're there. They're there to protect the school in case for school shooting. I want them to also be able to approach the SLEO.
Sure.
If they have a, a situation, not only for something criminal. But maybe my wife went to school here and somebody approached her. Now she looks back at it years later. They ended up killing themselves. She said, if I should have listened to what they really said.
Right.
I would have figured it out. So that's part of what I want the SLEO there also to, to hear what they might be saying. I say, wait, something might be up here.
Right.
Let's address that. Let's go to the school and let's call, whatever help we need to get, let's get it.
I mean, I know that elementary school is probably not as extreme as the, the higher grades, but you know, it, it starts off somewhere. The seed is planted and it can, and sometimes like in some cases that we just heard about, it gets worse very quickly. You know what I mean? Thankfully I don't get intimidated easily, but if I did, you know, that bullying via social media could have done some damage. You know what I mean? It messes with you.
I'm going to say because, maybe because I'm going through it because I'm, I have an 11 and 13-year-old.
Yeah.
You know, all of yous are going to probably go home tonight and go through your kids' phone.
My child doesn't have a phone thankfully, but it's only a matter of time until you, you know.
I will tell you right now, my 11-year-old knows 10 times more than I do.
Absolutely.
And if she wanted to hide something, she could. I'll sit there on the computer going, what the hell's wrong? Why someone come over and go, it's okay, Dad. Okay? That's part of the problem I'm seeing also. I think we're trying to do the right thing as parents a lot of times. It's just that we don't have all the information.
Correct.
That's why I was trying to say to you when I'm driving the kids in the car, I hear everything. Because that's the time they're talking. Because most times they're like this. And, and I don't, I don't get anything. They're going through the phone. So I turn my radio off, other than I find some of their conversations funny. I found out all the information that they're talking about.
Right.
And, and I, I think that's, we're just facing a new horizon now that we have never faced before. And I was a kid, I came home, my room was upside down. My parents went broke. If I had done something wrong, they would have found this. We don't have it anymore because everything's done on that phone. And, and, and the bullying is done on the, on, and back in the day, you got into a street fight, you know, nobody taped it. There wasn't other kids there with a camera egging this on. It didn't occur. But these are new things that we're addressing now and. It's very difficult because I, I just think we're touching the.
Yeah.
And, and it's making it very difficult. And, and that's when we started seeing this, that we thought we needed to get together and try to start addressing it somehow. We, we need to try to do something because I'm just afraid one day that is going to escalate sometime.
We need to start making it really uncomfortable and it starts at home. And even as PTOs, we need to instill different uh ways to. You know, reward great behavior. I came up with the idea of a kindness box. The PTO can put a hun, one to $2,000 towards a kindness box. And teachers that see any random act of kindness that, you know, a child did with, you know, out and in. Without an intention of getting an award, you know what? Go to the principal's office. That was fantastic what you just did. Whether it was kind words, a kind action, we need to make that something that's more rewardable. Rather than making this terrible behavior more acceptable, it needs to become unacceptable and it needs to start at home. And we need to start doing this, this as a community as well. And social media is a huge uh, uh vice of that. You know, there's certain pages in town that are meant for information and positivity and other ones that are meant for pure bullying. And that's something we need to make uncomfortable and we need to start that now because.
So Sheri, I, I do want to congratulate you on the kindness coins, I think it's called.
Uh, that was not me. That was, that was probably Mr. Albe's who's done a phenomenal job.
So yeah, my daughter spoke to me about it this morning. So kudos to that.
Yes, it's fantastic.
She said kindness coins and I was trying to figure out what coin she was referring to.
Right.
And then I asked her, where are you men? And she slowed down and I figured it out.
Yeah.
Um, but talk, in, in discussion and making this feel uncomfortable, speak up.
Absolutely.
Well, this is why I'm going to make this feel uncomfortable because I think most people know I don't mind doing that. So.
Same here, brother.
On the, on the chat in our current, we have three questions with uh anonymous personnel asking the questions. Well, that's where the problem starts. If you cannot as a parent, as a child, speak up. And then we can never be united. We could never do it because if you're anonymous, then it just goes to the wayside. Because we don't know what we're defending, who we're defending, who should we, you know, focus in, you know, everyone just said here, if I knew before, it could have happened. Uh, but I do want, uh, May, if you can, now, later in the future, what role? And I want to be careful in asking this question, or what can this SLEOs do in addition to being a figure? On the corner, right? So what I mean by that, what else? Or what's within the role? Because I have never looked at the guidelines. I don't know what their job description. So I love holding. Accountability based on a description. So, and I don't know it today. What other than just standing there can be done? Uh, maybe small seminars. I've heard, I've asked numerous times, how does the SLEO get caught up? Or how do they know where to report? And I've been told numerous times by our administration that I believe every morning. Or so you guys have a recap of what's happening, what's occurred at the police department. So I'm just wondering what, how can we utilize them a bit more? Because if I'm not wrong, they were ex-police officers, right? With recent retirement, right? Something of that nature. So I believe, and I'm assuming if you retire is over 20 plus years. So you have enough knowledge. To provide our children's everything their parents are asking for. to provide our children's everything their parents are asking for. What are their rights? What's the delicate balance between, between a cause and effect and, and a consequence? And, and what, how can we utilize them, right? How can this district, and I'm assuming they're under your guidance, utilize them a little better? And I don't know the answers, but maybe you can help me understand that.
But, a, and this is something me and the superintendent talk about a lot. Of, of what aspects, they're, they're not gonna go into the bathroom and look for people with vapes, they're not going to do that.
No, I think, can I just say something, and I've been, I would say that for them to also be, instead of like, I know in different schools, it's different places, but also to be the ears, also to become like a contact person. I think the, the kids feel that they're there for, like you said, security, but they're not really there, like if there's a concern or that they can talk to them. So I think just maybe advocating the role, the way you described it, that they're there to help or listen or have another person. I don't know how we can expand on that.
And I don't, and I, but I, I, I think part of the problem is though, is that you're not gonna know when they do that.
Right.
So, this, like a SLEO, like we are dealing with SLEOs where they are coming to us with information because they overheard something or saw something. They have dealt with some kids in the past. I think we gotta realize that they're, they're just really get, we haven't had a normal year yet since we've hired them. Right, so, you know, we're just getting back to normal where we're able, we haven't had a presentation. I don't want to do a virtual presentation for the students anymore, they don't want to be on the screen, they're not gonna pay attention. So we're, we're getting back now to normal where we are able to do small group things with the SLEOs and things like that. When we have red ribbon week and we have non-violence week where we have programs going on. So we are going to be including these things again, but I, I do want to say that, I know that if something happens off the campus and the police were involved the night before and it involves one of our families and students, they're coming in, they're talking to the principal the next day and say, hey, just so you know, this kid had a really rough night, you might want to get your counselor to them early just to check in on them, uh, make sure you get to some of your teachers, let them know if they're having a bad day to notify the main office right away. So that, that communication is happening now. Yeah, we have, I believe there's like three or four lunch aids at a time, I, I, I wish I could hire more. I don't have, I, I put it out there, it's a, it's a unique person that has the time to do it. You know, again, I, I, I've been around here a long time. Our, when I first got here, like, there was some problems. We had some big problems in lunchrooms and bathrooms, like, we're getting angry now because kids are wearing black jeans and hoodies. Like, that's part of the problems that we're dealing with now with uniforms and things like that, where we had major problems going on twelve years ago. So we do have lunch monitors. You know, our staff, they, by contract, I can't make them do a lunch duty if they teach six classes, so, you know, we are short-staffed, I put it out to the community, who's interested in being a lunch aide? If I'm able to get three or four people, we're very fortunate to do so. But I, I really wish you could walk through here during lunchtime because I think if there's a video and something bad happens, you think that's what the three periods of lunch look like, when I walk through here, the kids are sitting around enjoying themselves, they're outside playing. Yeah, well, I know my principals are in there, are always checking in. I usually pop into lunch once a week to the elementaries and I'm saying hello to kids. The little kids like me a lot, it's great, so when I go into a preschool classroom, I am appreciated. I am really appreciated, they used to run up and hug me, but now with COVID, they're told that they shouldn't. But, yes, we, we, we have teachers in there too, because we can work that into the elementary schedule where we do have one or two teachers in there, there are one or two teachers on the blacktop outside. But, you know, it's like, two, three-year-olds, they run into each other, they get hurt. It, it's not like, you know, it's like, that's what we're, I, I'm seeing and hearing, like, and again, if a parent's telling you something different, then I, then please bring that to our attention, that's like, the thing I hear all the time is, there's a big bullying problem going on in second and third grade. Okay, please bring that to our attention, right? Whoever parent is complaining, please bring that right to the principal's attention and so we can deal with it. We're constantly trying to deal with conflict resolution is a big thing that we deal with the students now, that we want to get those two kids in a room together. Putting the parents in the room doesn't always work out anymore. You know, just recently in the high school, they gave them community service hours for doing the Educate, Don't Escalate program. I reached out to, to that presenter and I want to bring that to the high school on it, so that all the kids could see it, not at night. So we are talking about doing different things, but I, I really need everyone to understand that we have not been able to do something like this because people have not been comfortable and we weren't even allowed to. So we are, we, I'm like excited that we're here, we're not wearing masks, that we're able to have this two-hour dialogue and, you know, I hope to push more of it out of it. One of my goals has been community engagement. Right, so it's engaging the community, it used to be community, community notification, so I think people get enough of the text messages, the emails and all that, so, anyone that wants to know and is following along, I think we do a very good job of getting that word out there. But now my goal has been and will be for the next couple of years is engaging the community in these events. And now we are able to do that, we have a couple of things planning that we plan to do, to do more of the bullying, to giving parents more help. We want to do like a Parents University where we open up a school one night and we open up classrooms and we're teaching them different things, the college process, bullying, how to work the, the grading system online, you have the ability to check your kids' grades every day. You have the ability to check their discipline log every day, current grade book.
Can I say something on that matter? I don't know what could be done at, I, I mean, you guys know me, but at that level of like maybe getting some classes of IT for us parents that are like really behind the times with that? You know, like you said, I mean, you, you kind of go in there, you're kind of blind, you're lucky if you find something. But it, it's hard, I think that we really need that education of.
And, and I will, I will agree with you that because some of the things that, that I tell our administration team all the time is that we deal with this every day. So it is like, I'm like, like if a parent tells me, I don't know how to get in real time, like, I'm like, how, how do you not know how to get in real time? But it's the, the idea is that we deal with it every day and they don't, that this is something that they're not used to. It'd be the same thing if he was a plumber and he told me that he had to change a pipe for that, I would say, I have no idea what you're talking about. So yes, that is something else that we, it's something else that we are talking about and providing to our parents in English and Spanish and any language that we have to. There's just one last question, it is getting to nine o'clock, it's been two hours with the police department, if anyone has anything else. But when my son was being bullied during recess, it was a teacher that was watching over the kids, not a SLEO. They need to be trained and told what they need to do, the teacher and my son noticed, did not notify administration of the situation. So that is something that we will definitely look into and talk about. But from my end, I want to thank the police department.
Just for you, and I, I just want to say one thing, I know you've got here with a lot of questions today. I'm gonna be honest with you, there's not a time yet that it's come across the detective's desk or one of patrol officers who's come to me, but I haven't called Mr. Kennedy and he wasn't aware of what was going on at that point. So I gotta say, he, he is on top of everything. Most of the administrators, administration is on top of it when, when we're addressing it, so they do a really good job and I, I just wanted to, to put that out there.
But I, I do want to thank the, the police department, the police commissioner was here, our board members that are here tonight, we have some board members in the crowd as well and I saw a couple online, so, we are committed to this, we are committed to helping and I will always say, we need to know to help, so please reach out. If you don't know how to reach out, ask someone how to reach out. Walk to the board office, knock on my door and come in, I, I see people all the time. It's on our website, I sent it out. It's for everybody, yes, it's mostly for the kids because that's what the kids are gonna see more than anything else. All right, so I want to thank everyone again and appreciate it and we hope to do it again.
Thank you, everyone.